At this point in time, I have to entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work session, followed by a closed session, work session pursuant to the local government article, section three dash three oh five B one, to discuss a personnel matter pertaining to the appointment of a direct dep- Ms. Hurley, I tell you, give this stuff to me every two weeks. It's an awful lot to read. The appointment of a deputy director of administration for recreation parks and tourism to protect the privacy of the individual. The county council will reconvene in legislative session following the closed session for the submission of James Simmons as deputy director of the Department of Recreation Parks and Tourism, and to consider resolution number ninety-two dash two thousand twenty-four, which is the confirmation of Mr. Simmons as deputy director of recreation and parks. And that's a, that is a motion.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. At this time, we go into open work session, and the first item on the open work session is the memorandum of un- of understanding between the Wycomico County of Maryland and Eastern Shore Undercover LLC. As I stated before, our guest tonight is Wycomico County Sheriff Mike Lewis. Sheriff, it's nice to have you here. I know you've have some guests who have been kind enough to join you. If you need another chair, please feel free to bring it up. And if I could ask, for the record, it's, it's part of our procedure, start at my left, if you would introduce, let us know your name and your position with the mic so that we can, uh, we can add in the record. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
James W. Phillips, Jr., Sheriff Dorchester County, Maryland.
Ronnie Howard, Sheriff Somerset County.
Mike Lewis, Sheriff Wycomico County, Maryland.
Matt Cristofoli, Sheriff Worcester County.
Gentlemen, thank you so much for being here. Very much so. Sheriff Lewis, I will certainly, well, I think what we'll do, if you don't mind, Sheriff, if we may, Mr. Benson, I know that you had some legal opinions that you wanted to share, whether it's first referenced as makes us understanding.
So, Mr. President, County Council, on the screen, Ms. Hurley has put up a copy of the MOU that's at issue and is the, is the subject of this open meeting. I have highlighted certain sections on page one, so obviously the top is just the title. I would point out in the, in the section that says specifically, this agreement aims to reconcile the necessity for police officer safety with the Public Information Act mandated by the state of Maryland, and further discussed in the attached attorney general opinion, which is hereby incorporated by reference and included in the exhibit. Um, I, I have done a memo to the council, and in the memo, I had discussed the Public Information Act, so I won't discuss that as part of this here. Ms. Hurley, if you could move to the third page of the MOU. On the third page, it shows that this was signed on July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, and it says, under paragraph A, three A, the county agrees to provide Eastern Shore Undercover access to all police dispatch radio transmissions. Two, the, uh, the county will provide Eastern Shore Undercover with a county-owned radio by which all police dispatch transmissions can be assessed. And then, under number five, it says, the county will inform Eastern Shore Undercover of any police dispatch radio communications that should remain confidential. That language is important as you, when we discuss the Public Information Act. Following down under three B, it says, Eastern Shore Undercover agrees to publish accurate police radio dispatch transmission data on social media platforms adhering to Public Information Act requirements. Second, not to publish data deemed sensitive information is defined by the Attorney General of Maryland. Third, to delay publication of radio communications between fifteen and thirty minutes to ensure officer safety and our scene security. Further delay may occur if deemed appropriate. Um, under the circumstances, if a call clears before the thirty-minute timeframe, the call may be posted. Four, adhere to law enforcement agency or emergency service organization requests not to publish a specific radio communication. So, for the council's benefit, that's, this is the MOU that's under discussion, and it's on the screen so that the public, who might not have seen it, has access to the relevant portions of it. Um, when this came out, I was asked to take a look at the memorandum of understanding, and I prepared a memorandum of understa- a memorandum with regard to the, the MOU which has been provided to the county council. What I'd like to do, before the sheriff makes his presentation or opens the discussion, is to kind of outline what I think the MOU says. I'm going to try to be as brief as possible. In doing that, in the, the, the background on this is that Sheriff Lewis made an operational decision to encrypt sheriff police radio transmissions. Sheriff Lewis is here tonight to provide an explanation, I assume, as to why he thinks encryption is important, and he has obviously other sheriffs with him that can outline that as well. From my non-police point of view, the encryption protects the sheriffs, uh, all sheriff's, uh, police radio transmissions, including communication between deputies and sheriff SWAT teams. So, um, there's an issue whether you think that the, there should be something, um, no encryption. The reality is that there are instances when the sheriff SWAT team is called out, there are emergencies. The SWAT team may have its own private communication, but the deputies that are on scene assisting or helping with the SWAT team or communicating with the SWAT team over the same radio channels. So, in effect, some part of, or a suspenseful, significant part of the communication between, between, with the SWAT team is then open to the public, and it's open to anyone that's hearing it. So, if the SWAT team is there in an emergency situation, that communication is clearly confidential and is needed, not only for the protection of the SWAT team, but to ensure a successful outcome. It protects radio transmissions by sheriff school resource officers. So, um, just to understand that, my understanding is that a school resource officer uses the same, um, police channels that the other deputies use. If there is an incident in the school involving a juvenile, the sheriff's, the, the SRO or school resource officer will potentially be on the radio, and he may be discussing the incident, and during that discussion, it's possible that the name of the juvenile may be disclosed. Uh, and if, if you have encryption, that juvenile's name is protected. If you don't have encryption, it's open to the public, and as a policy, juvenile names are generally not disclosed in, in police matters and court matters. Um, the MOU, in the MOU, the executive provided Eastern Shore Undercover with a county-owned radio. At this time, it's not clear to me whether the radio that's been supplied to Eastern Shore Undercover was one issue to the sheriff, or it's my understanding that, that there are additional radios that are maintained by the Wycomico County Emergency Services Department. Um, the radios that are maintained by the Emergency Services Department are maintained for emergency cer- emergency situations and are there in case there's a problem and additional radios are needed. They're not there to be distributed for non-emergency situations. Um, the other thing that's, that we don't know an answer to at this point is, the, the radio that's supplied, um, it's my understanding is a two-way radio. That means that not only can the person with the radio hear the, the encrypted transmissions, but unless the radio's been modified, that person in possession of the radio potentially has the ability to actually call in on the radio and talk to, to police deputies and potentially interfere with that communication. Um, that may, that, my understanding is that can be disabled, but since we don't have any information, the county's not been provided any information, and my understanding is sheriff's not been providing information, we have no idea whether that function on the radio's been disabled or not disabled. So, we have a situation where the radio, person in possession of the radio, not only has the ability to potentially, now has the ability to, to hear encrypted, um, radio transmissions, but may have the ability to actually call in on the radio. Um, if you could move to the third page, Ms. Hurley. Um, I have reviewed the county charter and the county code, and I can find no provision in the county charter or county code that authorizes the executive provide county-owned radio to a non-county entity. So, let me stress that again. What we have here is, we have what I understand to be a seven thousand dollar radio. The county executive has provided a seven thousand dollar piece of equipment to an individual in the county or to a company in the county. I see, there's no provision, and I'm aware of, in the county charter or in the county code that authorizes the county executive to unilaterally make a decision to gift, transfer, or provide a piece of county personal property to a, an individual. Um, the sheriff, the, the public may not understand this, and I don't know if the council fully understands it. The sheriff, uh, all three, four of these gentlemen that are sitting in front of you, but in this situation, the Wycomico County Sheriff specifically, is a state, is a state constitutionally-created office. He is not a county employee. He is not subject to the control of the county executive. Um, and the, you need to understand that when you understand the MOU or review the MOU. Um, the, in this situation, the county executive has made a decision in the MOU with regard to a state officer and a state-created entity, which is what the sheriff is. Um, the, if the radio that was provided to Eastern Shore Undercover turns out to be a radio that was issued to the sheriff, the county executive has, has essentially transferred or provided sheriff department, sheriff office equipment, um, to a, an entity. So, in that situation, it's not even county-owned property, it's state-controlled or state sheriff-controlled property that she would have given to the, uh, to Eastern Shore Undercover. Um, if you move over to page four and five of the memorandum, um, the, uh, the MOU references the Maryland Public Information Act, um, and as you recall, in the first paragraph of the MOU, it says that this is being done to ensure compliance with the Public Information Act. Um, for council's benefit and the public's benefit, the Public Information Act, uh, says basically that, that governmental documents are subject to disclosure, um, to the public. Um, but to better understand that, you need to understand that a, a, uh, before that document is disclosed, there is a request made, um, to the governmental agency. The governmental agency then has ten to thirty days to respond to the public information request. So, it's not an immediate disclosure. By giving the encrypted radio, the executive has essentially given immediate access to public documents, as opposed to the ten to thirty days. Now, the reason the ten to thirty-day, um, timeframe is important to understand is that under the Public Information Act, uh, the governmental agency, in this case, the sheriff's department, is mandated to review the document that's been requested and to remove, redact, or deny any confidential information that's exempted. By giving immediate access, the sheriff's office is no longer able to comply with the requirements of the Public Information Act. Um, he, to follow up on that, because the sheriff is a state-created agency, uh, the sheriff's department is subject, is, is, uh, he, his legal advisor is the Maryland Attorney General. It's not the county attorney. It's the Maryland Attorney General. Um, and the Maryland Attorney General's office, um, would be the one who would advise the Wycomico County Sheriff's Department with regard to, um, the way the Public Information Act is handled. And to my knowledge, neither the Attorney General's Office or the Maryland Public Information Act Compliance Board has notified the sheriff that they have, that they are not in compliance with the existing Public Information Act, and no complaints have been registered, to my knowledge, to indicate that the county sheriff's department is not in compliance with the Public Information Act. Um, in the, uh, in the MOU, the county executive attached, uh, a copy of a Maryland Attorney General's opinion. Um, and the purpose of attaching it is presumably to suggest that that Attorney General's opinion supports the decision to, uh, provide access to the police radio communications. For the council's benefit, the Maryland Attorney General opinion that's cited in the MOU does not apply to sheriff's radio transmissions. Um, rather, the, the, the Attorney General's opinion applies, um, to, um, emergency services nine-one-one calls. So, to my understanding, if I, if Bob Benson calls, has an emergency, and he dials nine-one-one, he is connected to the county emergency services department by telephone. The Attorney General's opinion says that that telephone call to nine-one-one is a public record that is subject to being disclosed, um, in a PIA or Public Information Act disclosure. That's not a sheriff's, the sheriff does not control the emergency service department. That, 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 uh, phone call is not a sheriff's radio transmission. Once the, once the call goes into emergency services, my understanding is, emergency services will determine which agency is, is going to be sent, the call, if that call is sent to the Wycomico County Sheriff's Department, the Wycomico County Sheriff's Department has several police dispatchers. At that point, the police dispatchers in the sheriff's department can take control over that call, and then they, um, initiate, uh, responses from the deputies via the sheriff's police radios. Um, so, to the extent that this Attorney General opinion is cited, you need to understand that the Attorney General's opinion applies to nine-one-one calls. It does not apply to police radio calls. The other aspect of that is that even if, even though the Attorney General's opinion says that nine-one-one calls are, um, subject to disclosure under the police, under the Public Information Act, again, that disclosure process, uh, will require a, a Public Information Act request to go to the emergency services department. The emergency services department then has ten to thirty days to provide a response, and when they provide that response, they have to either deny providing it or at least redact any confidential information. So, if Bob Benson calls in, and I have a, an emergency that requires a discussion about my, my mental or, or physical health, my mental or physical health is not something that is to be disclosed in that, uh, Public Information Act disclosure. There are many other areas of, of confidential rema- information or not to be disclosed, um, but by providing this, uh, uh, information via the, relating to the, um, sheriff's police radios on an immediate situation disclosure, um, the ability of the sheriff to redact or deny or review to make sure that confidential information is not released has been removed. Uh, and in fact, in the MOU, the executive has essentially attempted to assign the responsibility for compliance with the Public Information Act to a non-governmental entity. Um, so, she has basically said that Eastern Shore Undercover now has the responsibility to not disclose confidential information. That's not, frankly, that's, the, the information that would be disclosed is sheriff department information, sheriff department information that the county executive has no control over. Um, and the county executive, in my opinion, has no authority to try to transfer a state-mandated responsibility that the sheriff's department has to a, uh, non-governmental, uh, individual. Um, the, uh, just to reemphasize, the sheriff is a state official. He is not under the control of the executive, um, or the supervision of the executive. The executive has no authority to interfere with the sheriff's legally mandated responsibility under the Maryland Public Information Act, and specifically has no authority to transfer the sheriff's Public Information Act responsibility to Eastern Shore Undercover. Um, prior to entering into the MOU, the executive did not notify the sheriff or the county council that she was considering such agreement. The executive did not request the sheriff's input in the draft in agreement, the, an agreement which directly impacts the operations, sheriff's office, the safety of the deputies, and his ability to comply with the Maryland Public Information Act requirements. In my memo, I have outlined, uh, conclusions that I have reached, at least. Um, my first conclusion with regard to the MOU is that the executive has transferred or given an encrypted radio to a non-county entity. The executive has no authority to give an encrypted radio to Eastern Shore Undercover regardless of whether the radio is a sheriff's radio or a county EMS radio. If the executive has the authority to transfer a county EMS radio or a radio into control of the sheriff, that she, does she also have the authority to transfer or loan a vehicle or firearm or computer to a constituent of hers? There is no distinctive difference between loaning a seven thousand dollar radio and loaning a car, providing a car or providing someone a, the use of a, uh, piece of earth-moving equipment because the person needs to do some work around their house, and the county has earth-moving equipment out at the public works department. I don't think the county executive has the authority to allow an individual to use a piece of county equipment on their, for their personal use. Secondly, the county executive has interfered in the operation of sheriff's office by effectively countermanding the sheriff's decision to encrypt radio transmissions. The sheriff has a sole authority subject only to the control of the state legislature to encrypt his office's radio transmissions. The sheriff is not under the control of the county executive, and the action of the county executive in entering into the MOU usurps the authority of the sheriff. Third, the executive transferred the sheriff's legal responsibility to comply with public information requests to a non-county entity. Fourth, the county, the executive has provided Eastern Shore Undercover with the ability not only to monitor regular sheriff's radio trans- communications, but also to monitor, uh, school resource officers and potentially SWAT communications. The, the executive has also provided Eastern Shore Undercover the ability to monitor other non-police agency radio transmissions, including Salisbury, Delmar, and Frootland. The council may not be aware, but at the time, the Wycomico County sheriff encrypted his communications, Delmar, Salisbury, and Frootland all encrypted their communications. Effectively, when the, when the executive made the decision entering into the MOU and provide the radio, she not only provided the ability to listen to the sheriff's department encrypted communication, she effectively did the same thing for Delmar, Frootland, and Salisbury. Uh, clearly, the county executive has no authority over Delmar, Salisbury, and Frootland. Um, fifth, the, the executive provided Eastern Shore Undercover with a two-way radio that could have the ability to not only listen to sheriff's radio commu- communications, but also to place radio calls to Wycom County law enforcement and emergency personnel through the provided radio. As I indicated, we just don't know the answer to that question because nobody's provided that information to the council or to the sheriff. Six, um, the, I, the executives potentially violated the county ethics code in section thirty-seven dash thirteen, which states, "A public official may not disclose or use confidential information for the public official's own economic benefit," or, I added this emphasis, "for the economic benefit of another, if the information is required by reason of or in connection with the public official's position and is not available to the public." In this instance, the executives provided Eastern Shore Undercover with the ability to monitor encrypted sheriff's radio communications, which constitutes confidential information. The action of the county executive provides an economic benefit to Eastern Shore Undercover, and the confidential information is not gen- would, would, is not generally available to the public because they don't have the ability to listen in on encrypted br- public, uh, sheriff's radio transmissions. And seventh, if the MOU exec- executed by the executive is legal and binding on the sheriff, the county will almost certainly be required to provide a radio to every newspaper, radio station, TV station, or blogger that requests the same access as Eastern Shore Undercover. As a result, this MOU will negate any benefit to encrypting sheriff's radio transmissions in Wycomico County. I would only add that if the radios cost seven thousand dollars apiece, which is what I understand, if you give out twenty radios, it's going to cost the county a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. You can do the math. Uh, in today's world, um, everybody is a citizen, um, reporter and has the ability to set up their own, uh, Facebook pages, YouTube pages, websites, and I don't know how you differentiate between Eastern Shore Undercover or anyone else who has a Facebook page and decides they would like to have, uh, an encrypted radio. Um, not, which, the, you know, WBOC, WMDT, the radio stations, they clearly would have the right to have the same thing. Um, and I don't think that the, uh, the MOU does not contemplate that the county's going to be spending that sort of money, uh, potentially in order to comply with this. So, the purpose of the memo was to try to give some background to the council, um, on what the memorandum says and how I view the memorandum. Um, hopefully, I didn't go on too long. Um, and I would defer to the sheriff to make whatever comments that he feels are appropriate.
Thank you. Shane, you had one comment to make?
I was just going to say, you mentioned agencies within Wycomico County, but I think it's going to get further than that. That Wycomico County radio eventually be able to listen to other counties, right? I mean, it, yeah. So, it's going to get further than Wycomico County. I want to make sure everybody knows that. This just isn't a Wycomico County thing. Whoever's got that radio will be able to listen to Worcester, Dorchester, whoever's in those banks on that radio system. Eventually, Salisbury City, they'll be able to listen to everybody, and not only listen, transmit if they decide to do so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Benson. Very thorough. Sheriff Lewis?
I would like to, uh, direct my initial comments to Mr. Bob Benson. Um, your legal interpretation, your legal analysis, and the legal summary that you just provided to the men and women of this council and to everyone seated behind me, and those seated next to me at this table, was on point. You nailed it. And I want to thank you for all the hard work and all the research you've done to bring the council, men and women, up to, uh, up to, to date on this very serious issue. Mr. President, distinguished members of our council and the support staff who are here tonight, good evening. I'd like to start by apologize for even being here tonight. Tonight is national night out, a night when sheriffs across this country are out in their counties, meeting with their constituents and their community members. A night where each and every one of you should be out in your county, meeting the needs of our community. But here we are. Tonight, I find myself in these council chambers along with Sheriff Jimmy Phillips of Dorchester County, Sheriff Ronnie Howard of Somerset County, and Sheriff Matt Cristofoli of Worcester County. Also present, seated directly behind me is Chief Dave Monchon of the Salisbury Police Department, and his deputy chief, Harry Drewer. On Friday afternoon, July the twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-four, I was on vacation with my family down the Outer Banks of North Carolina, when an announcement came out from our own Wycomico County government, an announcement via press release from the executive's office. She announced that she had entered into an agreement, an MOU, with Eastern Shore Undercover, herein after referred to as ESU. She announced that an agreement had been struck between the county and ESU. This executed MOU would immediately provide ESU with a county-owned police radio affording ESU with unprecedented and unfettered civilian access to all emergency police radio transmissions. As was said earlier, I was never consulted by my own county executive on this MOU or any other MOU between Wycomico County and Eastern Shore Undercover. No one from my office was ever consulted on this MOU. I checked with members of my council, and to my knowledge, not one of you was consulted. Not one. There was zero collaboration between this county executive with any other fellow elected officials before entering yet again another MOU. She did it on her own. There were no checks, imbalances, none, period. She sought the advice of none of her own elected officials. She ignored us all and entered into an agreement with nothing more than a Facebook blogger. Why wasn't the county council consulted? One of our own members, who's a twenty-five-year veteran of law enforcement, a former Wycomico County sheriff's deputy, a current Worcester County sheriff's deputy, certainly, he would have told her, this is not a good business venture. Because Executive Giordano and her now-business partner, Eastern Shore Undercover, have taken to various forms of social media and have utilized our very own local PAC fourteen to control their own narrative as to what led to this MOU. I thought it would serve our community well, Mr. President, when I reached out to you and specifically requested this hearing here tonight, especially those who follow Eastern Shore Undercover. I want them to hear the truth about what has led to this quid pro quo deal between Giordano and Eastern Shore Undercover. While following ESU might be entertaining and stimulated to some, I ask you to please consider if you learn of your loved one's suicide, their sudden death, or a tragic car wreck from Eastern Shore Undercover's blog post. car wreck from Eastern Shore Undercover's blog post. While he has started to censor some of this personal information, the damage from his previous and irresponsible posts have affected many families in Wycomico County who have personally reached out to me in protest of what he does. However, you will never read about these protests on ESU because Earl Campbell possesses the ability to censor or simply delete those who disagree with him on anything, and he's proud of that, and he talks about that all the time on his blog. As a sheriff of Wycomico County, I pledge that this information will never be for sale under my leadership. A citizen's right to privacy during the most difficult times of their lives is of the most utmost importance to me and my command staff. In the fall of 2023, Worcester County Sheriff Matt Christofoli, seated to my immediate left, announced that all Worcester County Sheriff's Office personnel and law enforcement-allied agencies will be switching over to full encryption in early 2024. This announcement immediately drew the ire of Facebook blogger Earl Campbell and Eastern Shore Undercover, who immediately assailed Sheriff Christofoli, an elected official, while encouraging his Facebook blog viewers to call, email, and reach out to Sheriff Christofoli to express their opposition to encryption. Under the guise of transparency and then PIA censorship, the assault on Sheriff Christofoli was well underway. Wanting to support my fellow sheriff and following the footsteps of Worcester County's announcement to finally convert to encrypted police communications, I made my own announcement that Wycomico County would soon be switching over to encrypted police communications sometime in calendar year 2024, while emphasizing that encrypted police communications were now the industry standard. Almost every law enforcement agency in our region had already switched to encryption or were about to switch to encryption. Just for the record, Somerset County Sheriff Ronnie Howard, seated to my immediate right, notified me that they've been encrypted since 2005. Dorchester County Sheriff Jimmy Phillips, seated to my far right, has, and notified me that they have been encrypted for at least four to five years. He personally told me what led to their encryption was that individuals listening to police radio communications were in fact listening to the names and dates of birth that we were providing over the air to our dispatch. They were taking those names and dates of birth, and they were fraudently applying for credit cards, which created havoc for many innocent individuals who had their identities This was of serious concern to me, and it should be of serious concern to everybody in this room. We simply wanted to update our communication networks while meeting the industry standards of police encryption. Worcester County officials took the lead and scheduled an encryption meeting to take place on December the fifth, 2023. Members of our own Department of Emergency Services, specific to our radio communications guys, were present in this meeting as were encryption industry experts and police communications technicians. Also present in this meeting were members of the Maryland State Police and the Maryland Natural Resource Police. I asked the question of Guy Sterling, the meetings facilitator, with all these other agencies around me going with encryption, "What happens if I decide not to go?" His response was simple: "Wycomico County will be left behind." Before leaving that meeting, I announced we would be joining Worcester County in the switch to encryption immediately after that meeting, because there were individuals in that meeting that notified our county executive of my announcement. Immediately, Eastern Shore Undercover turned his ire on me, leaving me with the inability to have interoperability with Worcester County and other counties when we were transporting prisoners to these counties, to the courts, to the jails, or when we were providing mutual aid to these counties during other law enforcement operations. It became imperative that we had to switch to encryption. It was clear we needed to advance our police communications by going with full encryption. In January this year, there are two significant events that you and our viewers watching tonight, especially those who follow Eastern Shore Undercover, you need to remember what I'm about to say. These are facts, and they have been memorialized in writing. These two events are forever memorialized. The first occurred exactly one month of the day following the Worcester County encryption meeting. Number one, on January the fifth of this year, Earl Campbell and Eastern Shore Undercover gave a $3,500 campaign donation to Wycomico County Executive Julie Giordano during a non-election year. She doesn't even run for reelection for another two years. Number two, three days later, on January the eighth of this year, Mr. Campbell posted an article on Eastern Shore Undercover threatening to start releasing documents against Wycomico County Sheriff Lewis that he was attaining from, quote, "The county itself." Now, who's going to provide him with those documents? None other than his business partner. He stated the following in his post: "I'm letting everyone know that in the coming weeks, we will be going public with many items about Sheriff Mike Lewis. If you don't want to hear this type of information, and if you are a close-minded individual when it comes to certain elected officials, I would strongly suggest you unfollow the page, at least for the next few months. This is not what I wanted, but we have no other choice. Sheriff Lewis can bully a lot of people, but I'm not one of them. Sheriff Lewis made this personal with his attempts to shut us down because he disagrees with people calling him after seeing a post on Eastern Shore Undercover. No other reason," unquote. Does this sound like a man our own Wycomico County government should be doing business with? Does this sound like a business that promotes positivity and good deeds for the citizens of Wycomico County? Does this sound like a man who is impartial in his reporting of the news? Yes, he has launched a campaign against me. In his post, Campbell alleges that I'm trying to shut him down. I've never tried to shut anyone down. What I have done and will continue to do as your sheriff in Wycomico County is try to enhance and protect the operational safety of the men and women in law enforcement and enhance our interoperability with all of our first responders in fire, NEMs, and I am committed to protecting the privacy rights of our own private citizens." This is the same man that in an email dated March the third, 2022, when he sent this to me, Earl Campbell wrote me and showered me with laudatory comments. "I want to make, quote, 'I want to make sure I am doing the right thing, and due to the respect that I have for you, Sheriff, and knowing that you are a straight shooter, I figured you would be the best person for me to go over this with and get an honest answer.'" This, of course, was sent just months before Giordano's election. In his request to meet with me, he stated, "I'll treat you to lunch wherever we go." Mr. Campbell was seeking a partnership for me. He wanted first dibs on our communications. As the elected sheriff of Wycomico County, I am the sole custodian of any and all police radio transmissions as they relate to the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office. 911 calls do not come into the sheriff's office. They go straight, as Mr. Bob Benson said, to our county 911 center. If it is a police-related emergency, they are transferred to either the sheriff's office or the Maryland State Police. Then, any subsequent conversation becomes part of my records, of which I am the custodian. So when I realized that the county executive had provided Earl Campbell on Eastern Shore Undercover with a county-owned police radio to monitor encrypted law enforcement operations, I was deeply concerned. In the past several months, lots of hard work has been endured by my office and members of Wycomico County's radio department in programming well over two hundred law enforcement radios of the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office. In fact, my chief deputy warned me that all she would have to do is simply give him a police radio, and all this planning and installation work would be futile. I chuckled my response, quote, "I don't think she would be stupid enough to do that," unquote. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here tonight to tell you that I was wrong. She was determined and reckless enough to do just that. I remain shocked. Because of this arrangement between the executive and ESU, the purpose of encryption was negated, immediately nullified. All of our planning, our meetings, and the hard work by our own county radio communication employees, including a meeting in our own 911 center where Julie Giordano was present, when all the law enforcement chiefs, including Pittsfield, Delmar, Frootland, the city of Salisbury, the sheriff's office, and all the fire chiefs, we agreed unanimously, it was best to go to encrypted communications. Julie Giordano's comment was, "Fine, if that's what you guys want, I'm going to stand behind you. You guys are the experts, not me." Those were her comments, not mine. In another conversation with the Maryland Attorney General's Office just this morning, the Attorney General made it clear that the county executive does not have the right to disseminate sheriff's office encrypted communications to anyone, let alone a Facebook blogger. That is proprietary information that falls beneath the purview of the sheriff's office, as I receive any and all PI requests for those documents, not the executive. The sheriff, and only the sheriff, is the custodian of all information that is being transmitted over our channel. The sheriff is responsible for private and sensitive information that is being transmitted. The county executive cannot assume this role and responsibility, and certainly cannot transfer this responsibility to a private citizen such as Earl Campbell, who frequently refers to himself as, quote, "Mr. Eastern Shore Undercover," unquote, who has zero oversight by anyone. One example is on page three of the MOU, Roman numeral three, number five, states that the county will, quote, "Inform ESU of any police dispatch radio communications that should remain confidential," unquote. So who is going to do that on a case-by-case basis? Is the county executive going to call me or my office following each of the tens of thousands of calls for service we receive each year to determine the confidentiality or sensitivity of the call? Not hardly. Who is going to address the confidentiality or information being released to Earl Campbell? What about the civil liability to Wycomico County for releasing said information? On a daily basis, Earl Campbell makes it very clear on his blog, "If you don't like what I post, it's simple, just unfollow me. I will post what I want to post. This is my site." ESU historically censors your comments and brags about it and blocks people who disagree with him on anything, and is quick to tell you he would do the same. This comes from a person that is now in business with Wycomico County and per the MOU is now trusted to, A, publish press releases for the county, B, publish Wycomico County event information, and C, allow viewing access of all published content to authorized media outlets. ESU acts as a propagandist for one elected official in the entire Delmar region. It just happens to be the same elected official that awarded ESU this MOU. The county executive states in her press release dated July the twenty-sixth, quote, "We understand the importance and necessity of encryption, but we also recognize the importance of transparency and adhering to PIA requirements," unquote. Let me be clear, the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office maintains a well-established PIA policy that's been in effect for many years. We've never had any complaints about non-compliance from anyone, including the Attorney General's Office. Our policy was adopted and is reflective of a national model for dealing with PIAs. We deal with Freedom of Information Act requests on a daily basis. Our county executive states that our current NPI policy is inadequate and insufficient. The truth of the matter is, it just doesn't suit the immediate needs of a Facebook blogger. We deal with more PI requests now than ever before because this county executive encourages certain members of our community to file them. That is a fact. The 911 calls that are often referenced by the county executive are proprietary to our 911 center, not the sheriff's office. The 911 center does not fall beneath my purview. The Wycomico County Sheriff's Office goes to great lengths to post every call for service during the previous twenty-four hours, both on our WCSO website and our sheriff's app. The information posted includes a date and time, a nature of the call, an address, and the disposition of the call. Let's look a little closer at this MOU. It states, quote, "Wycomico County and Eastern Shore Undercover LLC signed MOU to ensure transparency and adherence to PIA requirements for 911 radio communications," unquote. This MOU has zero to do with transparency. Let's be clear. Instead, it has everything to do with the economic and monetary gain for Earl Campbell in Eastern Shore Undercover, period. It's that simple. Campbell is financially compensated by Facebook, by those visiting his site, reacting to his posts, those commenting on his posts, as well as the many sales from advertising. By providing Earl Campbell with a county-owned police radio and unfettered access to encrypted law enforcement operational communications, the county executive is enabling and providing Earl Campbell and ESU with a steady cl- cash flow. It's unquestionable. It's a steady cash flow that she is complicit in. And all it took, all it took, was a $3,500 campaign donation from Earl Campbell and Eastern Shore Undercover to seal the deal. To date, this is the largest single campaign donation made to the, quote, "Friends to elect Julie Giordano," unquote. When most people call the sheriff's office in emergency response, they do so because they're having a bad day. They need us. They've either been victimized, they've been in a car wreck, or they've made a horrible decision. What they don't need is someone sitting behind a keyboard exploiting their private lives. Their privacy means something to me and to my fellow sheriffs seated at this table. We strive to uphold their dignity and to respect the privacy of our citizens and those we encounter and those we are sworn to serve. The privacy rights of my citizens, I'm here to tell you tonight, the privacy rights of my citizens are not for sale to Earl Campbell or to Eastern Shore Undercover. He can keep his $3,500 donation. Law enforcement officials have long seen the value in allowing a small number of civilians, journalists covering breaking news among them, to hear their communications. But as numbers of listeners soared in a nation where true crime shows and reality television are wildly popular, the risk of allowing unfettered access at times including names, addresses, and phone numbers concern public safety officials. When a so-called, quote, "News organization," unquote, gives a $3,500 donation to an elected official like this for a favor that makes a direct threat in print against an elected sheriff, then is granted that favor, that crosses the ethical boundaries of what objectional journalism is and certainly the questionable leadership by an elected official. Since this donation, county executive Giordano and Mr. Campbell have been seeing their good deeds well chronicled all over social media throughout our community. It appears they are now attached at the hip as they travel throughout the region campaigning for 2026. Per the MOU and the new responsibility that is now bestowed on Earl Campbell by county executive Julie Giordano, will he still bash me and those who are not politically aligned with him? Time will only tell. One thing is clear, his Facebook blog has transitioned from one that attempted to post news to a political propaganda tool to further enhance the political career of our own county executive and her allies. What's now known throughout Wycomico County, the FOJ, or the, quote, "Friends of Julie," unquote. In closing, I will continue to consult the Maryland Attorney General's Office, the Office of our state prosecutor, and my own Wycomico County State's attorney, Jamie Dykes, for legal vice. Jamie Dykes, an elected leader and a woman who is widely respected by fellow elected officials and those she serves. I would simply ask the men and women of this council to explore any and all options to remedy this reckless and irresponsible agreement that was single-handedly orchestrated by the county executive and Mr. Eastern Shore Undercover. I will now defer to my colleagues seated to my left and to my right if they have anything to add or anything they would like to say, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Sheriff Lewis. Thank you. Very well said.
You need a bottle of water?
I do.
It's coming.
I need a beer, to be honest with you.
Oh, we have that, too.
But I can't drink that until I get home.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. You should have. Very much so. Uh, I don't know, you know, whoever wants to go first, be our guest, Howard is with Sheriff Folks, Howard or Christofoli. We do appreciate you all being here today, and we certainly will give you the floor at any time.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen. It, I'm not going to say a lot. Sheriff Lewis, uh, let's say, he hit nail on the head. I've been to the sheriff's office in Somerset since 2008, and they've been encrypted three years before I got there. As long as I'm there, we're not going to be encrypted. Sheriff, Chief Wink at Prentzisane and Chief Taylor in Chrisfield, they're also encrypted. They've already said they're not going to unencrypt their radio transmissions either. And it's like Mr. Benson said, yes, ours frequently transmit information for the students of Somerset County Public Schools, deputies frequently transmit information of victims that we are transporting for emergency evaluations for the mental illness. And, and again, it's officer, officer safety, and no way I'm going to ever unencrypt. It's going to stay that way. Thank you.
The only thing, I, I can't top what Sheriff Lewis said. I can't, I can't begin to touch it. It, it was a reckless thing to do. My biggest concern is how she just arbitrarily threw out officer safety, which is my biggest concern with this. You know, we've got to protect our officers. It's, it's in this hate police environment we have now, it's almost becoming a weekly incident where some police officers are ambushed while he's out here on the highway. Well, the only way they can ambush him is if they know where he's at, and if you've got the ability to- And if you've got the ability to listen to where they're at and what they're doing, it can certainly take place. I certainly hope it never happens here, but this is the kind of incident that can contribute to allow that to happen. Thank you for hearing us tonight.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, counsel, for hearing us tonight. And we're not going to be able to top Sheriff Lewis, but I will just add that when we started exploring, going to full encryption, we did our homework. We were looking at national best practices, and most law enforcement organizations around this country have gone to encryption quite a ways back, as indicated. You know, Somerset County has been encrypted for about 18 years now. So we were a little bit behind the curve, but in the time where legislation in Annapolis has been against law enforcement, that's caused a lot of stress on our law enforcement officers alone right there. But I had a lot of deputies and their families coming to me when we started discussing the idea of encryption. They were for it. Our FOP has provided a letter in full support of this. Our deputies, their families, they wanted this encryption. This was an extra blanket of security that would be levied to help protect our deputies. It also protects the citizens that we serve. All of this information that goes out, we live in a world full of scammers. We've all been hit with texts. We've all been hit with emails. And this is just information that is flowing out into the community. And it's our responsibility, not only to protect our community, but to protect the men and women who are out here protecting everyone. And this is just a blanket of security for them and for the residents of your county and for the residents of my county. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Very much. Very well said. Joe?
I was reading this MOU and several places in it, it talks about transparency. I'd like to, I'd like to read some emails. This came from our council administrator, the Julie, July 30th. It says, "A few citizens have reached out to council members requesting a copy of the MOU." This is Giordano responds. "Understood. Please, in the future, though, have citizens follow standard FOIA, Freedom of Information Act, request. That process is in place for a reason." Now, I wonder if she would have told Earl Campbell that? So citizens are asking for information, and this is what, this is what the council gets back. So anyway, thank you all for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes. One thing I didn't see in this MOU was any provisions for chain of custody for the county equipment, the radio. What happens when Mr. Campbell's not operating his site? What's to say that somebody doesn't have access to that radio? House guests, kids? I didn't see, did I miss something in there? I didn't see anything. Doesn't seem like there's a lot of oversight. Any plan?
A lot. There's none.
No plan in place?
There's none. There's zero.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Ladies first.
I'm definitely against this because he is a blogger. I've experienced bloggers when I was on the city council. Believe it or not, the creep's blogger is my friend. Because I try to get along with everybody, but I'm going to just say one paragraph I had. I worked in Daily Times for 15 years and the Somerset Herald. And the Daily Times, and I know the Salisbury Independent, they have an editorial staff that monitor what the reporters do, and they're called editors because they want to make sure nothing is slanderous or liable where you can be sued. Now, this person, Mr. Campbell, is reckless. He censors things. So how is he transparent? If it's supposed to be big transparency, how is the censoring of what people criticize him about, he censored or deletes it? I also agree the victim, if you're a victim of a crime, you don't want your privacy invaded. And I also believe that having access to this channel could hurt an investigation and the safety of the officers. Now, I use an example, when they brought the three hostages home, we knew President Biden said they were working on it, but they didn't broadcast what they were doing. And the only time that we knew the hostage was free, when you saw breaking news. So can you imagine every time Dick and Harry heard or was involved in the investigation, everything plastered on the TV? How would it have affected the release of those three hostages? So this is a bad move, and this is continuation. It's just like a waterfall. What bomb is coming next? You never know. It's just, it's just, it's just flowing like a river.
It is.
It's flowing. And
A red river.
And we say, why can't we get along? We're going to be sued if we do such and such a thing. But why can't we get along is the person. And it's not, I can get along with anybody. And I don't care if we disagree, you're still my friend. But this person, she just wants to be in control, and it's about control. And that's all I have to say because I promised John I'm going to talk about it.
You know, I look around this room, and I see a lot of law enforcement experience. A lot more than I even have. I hope the citizens look at them, listen to them. They know what they're talking about. They're trying to do what's in your best interest. You know, one of the things that I found troubling was this 15 to 30-minute delay before he would post something. Well, there's times we go to houses, and we might not get what we're looking for at the time, so we might want to pull back and watch the house or whatever. Well, I could be watching a house, and he posts that I was there 15 minutes ago, even though I may not still be on the call on the computer, I'm in the area, and now I'm busted, you know? And I'm trying to do proactive police work. So I just ask that the citizens who are watching on PAC 14, people that are in the room, listen to all of this law enforcement experience. They know what they're talking about. Okay? Thanks. Thank you.
Jeff? Nobody probably knows this yet, but in the last 45 minutes, two more social media sites have requested access to the encrypted communications. So to your point, we've now opened the door. Sheriff Lewis, do we know the cost to encrypt all these radios? It's about 200 radios, right?
It was over 200 radios for the sheriff's office alone, and then they had to do the radios of our allied partners throughout the county. But it takes an average of 15 minutes to reprogram each radio that was done by our own county employees. So look at the man-hours that went into that.
So all that just got wiped out by?
Absolutely. Evaporated.
Okay. I believe we might have touched on this. These radios have access to all police communications. Is that correct?
Correct.
Including SWAT operations?
Now, and as Mr. Campbell said, we really don't know. We were never consulted. We have no idea how many encrypted channels he has. We don't know. But we do know, based on what she's put in her press release, that he has the main dispatch encrypted channels. Our school resource deputies dealing with juveniles and the sensitivity of their names, their ages, and parents, calling the parents, and that stuff is put over the main line. When we're dealing with SWAT operations, all of our operators deal with the deputies on the scene and our covert investigators on the scene on our main dispatch channel, which he has complete access to. And I can tell you, there are many times we are on a call for 20 to 25 minutes trying to separate individuals and evaluate what we actually have before we have a clue what we've got. And obviously, if they're putting it, and there are many times when the individual we're dealing with wants to cooperate with law enforcement, and now he's compromised, his ability to cooperate has been compromised because all that information's been put out on social media now. So it really affects our ability to do our job. And I've asked her a dozen times, "Stay in your lane. For God's sake, stay in your lane." And she refuses to do it, as you said, Chaney. She won't stay in her lane on anything.
I think you had said reckless was one of the, I think you said
Reckless and irresponsible.
Yeah, and you said you were dumbfounded as well. I couldn't believe it when I first heard it. I don't know how anyone can subject the citizens of Wycomico County and deputies of Wycomico County to one individual and his discretion as to how he chooses to responsibly deal with such, you know, sensitive information. What if a mistake's made? What do you do? I mean, what do you do? I mean, there's no accountability for this individual. He's not even a, he's not even an employee of Wycomico County. So again, very dumbfounded, reckless, I think, to the degree of almost reprehensible. Hopefully, Sheriff, there's some, we can find some resolution to this. I know you had said you were talking to the Attorney General's Office. We, you know, we'll be glad to help you with anything in that regard. Maybe there's some process we can go through, there's a legislative process to address this, maybe with the help of Mr. Benson. And Mr. Benson, I want to thank you so much for what you, how much work you've prepared in this. But maybe we could, we'd have to lean towards Mr. Benson's for some type of maybe legal resolution. I don't know. No one, no one wants to go through any legal matters. I know Wycomico County, we've had our, too much.
Absolutely.
We've had too much legal issues, too many legal issues in this county. But we have to find a solution. I feel we really need to because, I mean, from my perspective, we can no longer, honestly, we can no longer leave the security of this council, this county, in the hands of anyone except for those such as yourself that were elected to defend
I want you to know, Mr. President, after serving 41 years in law enforcement, I had fully planned to retire at the end of this term. But because of what you just said and the reckless and irresponsible behavior that continues to be exhibited on a daily basis by this county executive, I will be running for a sixth term in this county. We need stability. We need somebody who's going to stand up to this bully and hold her accountable. I know Chief Dave Monchon, who approached me moments ago, would like to address the men and women of the council as well.
Oh, yes, certainly. Certainly, Chief. Yeah, glad to have you here.
Chief, you'll sit right here.
Michael, you can stay there. Just pull up another chair.
Go ahead, Michael. Get up.
Chief, glad to have you here.
Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity. I would just like to, there was a couple of things I can't, as Sheriff Lewis and the others have said, there's not much that's not been mentioned or said. I would like to just point out a couple of things in reference to Salisbury Police Department. There was an expense, some of our radios, quite a few of them, are older. They're the same type of radio, but they're an older model. So there was an encryption key that needed to be put in those radios in order to make the transition. So we had to set aside about $30,000, give or take about $30,000, for those radios to have the key put in in order to make the transition to the encryption. So I just wanted to let you know that piece of it. Also, going back to, I've been, been with the city quite a few years, but back prior 17, 2017 and prior, the county and the city had two separate radio systems. In 2017, we went to the new, what's called a P-25 radio system, and it was a cost-saving measure, and it was a robust system. It's a great radio system where all the agencies can operate on the county system and their own channels. There was two channels, or there could be more, in that system that were in our old radio system that were programmed, because these are very valuable, these radio frequencies are extremely valuable. These radio frequencies were taken out of our old system that was reaching end of life, like the county's was, and they were put into the new P-25 radio system. So these, although this is a county, the county radio system, these particular channels are owned by the city of Salisbury. So just to point that out. Now, of course, we can't operate, those, they're not, we can't use them unless we're obviously on the county system. But just to point that out. And I would say that, you know, the city of Salisbury, we're on pace to handle about 45,000 calls. Now, that's between self-initiated calls for service throughout the city. So we made the decision to encrypt. Each agency makes their own decision. So because Wycomico County decided to encrypt, it didn't mean Fruitland, Delmar, Salisbury needed to encrypt. We encrypted for all the same reasons that has been mentioned here. As Sheriff Christopher Foley had mentioned, it was a situation with our own folks, safety of our own folks, safety of the public, the things that have already been mentioned here as far as what's being transmitted. The question that I would have with our particular channels is, if, if, if Delmar, if Salisbury, if Fruitland were to decide, well, we don't want, we don't want Eastern Shore Undercover to have our particular frequencies in our channels, would we, would we be able to take the, would we be able to shut that down?
You shouldn't have to ask that question, Chief.
I agree, but that's your question. That's really, I just wanted to point out just a couple of those facts there. So I appreciate that. I was, I'd left National, as Sheriff had mentioned, I left National to come down here. It's unfortunate, I think we all have to be here discussing this, but it's where we are. I'm in fully support of Sheriff Lewis and the other sheriffs here in reference to what we're doing.
Yeah, I have a question for Sheriff, please, give us a second.
Sure. If you can stay, if you want.
Yeah, you don't have to go.
Leave the sheriff's party if you like.
I'm just curious. So how do we plan on disseminating information? Like, because if something happens, I mean, we, people need to know about it. And I'm just curious on how that can be disseminated. I know that sounds tricky, but how can that be disseminated without
We already do it via press releases all the time. We don't do it immediately sitting behind a keyboard. But we also don't report, like was on there the other day, a man standing at Chick-fil-A exposing his genitalia. We don't, we don't report that kind of nonsense. That's stimulating and entertaining, but it's not law enforcement's function to report that stuff. We report what our community expects to, law enforcement to report on a daily basis. We were always knocking out press releases. We put on our website. We put on a sheriff's app. We just don't put every little tiny thing. We got a bird caught in a downspout at the elementary school. He puts that on there. It's just stupid stuff that no one cares about.
Do you all know what Broadcastify is?
Sure.
Is that, is that something that can be done here, or is that something that you guys aren't interested in?
Certainly look into it.
Okay. And that is kind of like, what is it exactly? It's disseminating information, right?
15, 20-minute delay, 15, 30-minute delay.
Is that something that we can possibly do in Wycomico County? Just for transparency?
Something we could have possibly done.
Could have done, yeah, absolutely.
Whether willing to do it now or not, don't know.
Okay. Okay.
I don't know of any other agency that does that.
Well, I think Anna Rundell does. I just looked it up. They have, they have Broadcastify, and I, I don't know, am I wrong? But I'm just trying to, you know, trying to be as transparent as possible, and that is something that I am aware of.
For the
I mean, I mean, when there's an incident, you know, a major car accident happens, like, when are we going to find out about it? Are we going to find out about it? I mean,
Our first concern
Okay. I know, I understand everything you all are saying. I totally understand everything you all are saying with the, with the credit cards and the privacy and everything. But, but there is a point where we have to release some of this information to the public. But we do. We do. Yes.
He just told you, press releases.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we disseminate the information.
You know, with all due respect, our first concern regardless will always be with these individuals who are sitting here in front of us.
Yeah, absolutely.
And their deputies.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Yes, Jeff. Not to date you guys, but can you go from left to right? How many years of law enforcement experience do you have?
Forty-seven.
Good.
Forty-two.
Forty-one.
Twenty-nine.
Rookie.
Thirty-seven.
So, so we have almost 200 years' experience in law enforcement sitting in front of us. I don't care what field you are working in, you can't buy experience, you can't rent it, you live it. It would make sense to me that anything involving law enforcement needs to go through these guys right here, just for the simple fact, they've lived it, they know what works, and they know what doesn't work. And how these guys were not consulted is beyond belief. I thank you all for your service, every day.
Let me have Joe real quick.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead. It's about 35 years ago, maybe that long or longer, just to lighten the mood here in the room, because we've been under a lot of pressure tonight. But anyway, I bought my father a scanner. My father drove around the neighborhood most of the time, 15 mile an hour in his old white pickup, you know? So one day I was coming along on a tractor, and I meet him, and he's running like 75 going down Forest Grove Road. I seen him later on. I said, "Dad, what in the world?" He says, "There was an accident on Mount Herman Road. I heard it on the scanner. I had to get down there." That's what happens, you know? He was putting his life in somebody else's endanger He was putting his life in somebody else's endanger to try to get to this accident that he'd heard on the scanner. So anyway, that's, that's part of the reason this thing needs to, there needs to be some control, so there really does.
Mr. President. Good luck to Shani, you were going to say?
Oh, I just wanted to say that I keep hearing transparency, transparency, James transparency. It wasn't transparent that this MLU was being done. You have to realize that.
I'm not, I didn't, I'm not citing anything here, I'm just saying.
Just like when a little girl passed away at Hobbs Road, I knew it the same, almost like the same minute, because somebody called that knew the family. And by me working at also the newspaper, we would get press releases from the Daily Times, I got, you're putting things now on the, on the, your website, the county has a website, you see things on W, what is it, Friday Most Wanted? You can see things. And some things, why do you want to be a signifier and want to know everything that's going on in town? You should be, be home relaxing, looking at TV or something, or going to a restaurant, not worrying about what's going on. As long as it's not in front of your house, why are you going to worry about what's going on in Delmar? You know, you need to stop being nosy. You know, that's what's, this, this, this is what this social media's done. I'm cooking fish, I'm cooking this, I'm doing this, I'm doing that. And then say, I don't want you in my business. You put your business all out in the street so people know it. So why do you want to know everything? You wait till it comes out in the media, breaking news, news break, it's, you know, you look, you, it's, you're going to be told. That's all I'm saying. And I think the news, I think the police department is transparent as much as they can be, because things are being investigated. I think the news media, the print news media, and also they have their own website, they give out news. So what more do we want? You know? Let's talk about something else. Let's talk about playgrounds, let's talk about happy stuff.
What more do we want? We want the citizens of Wycomico County to vote yes for amendment A. That's what we want.
Amen.
Mr. President, can I, I don't want to belabor this, but the sheriffs mentioned something that I don't understand, and maybe the council does, but can you elaborate on how the providing of this radio to ESU will ultimately enable or impact the other sheriffs, the other departments outside of Wycomico County? Because I'm not clear on that.
Well, we have interoperability, and that's been enhanced by encryption. And with encrypted channels, specific main dispatch, any encrypted allied agency coming into the county, forget, let's forget about all the allied agencies that are encrypted, like Dave mentioned a while ago, we're all encrypted. He has no choice but, quite frankly, to have his own encryption, radio transmissions, exploited now by ESU, because he's on a service, he's on a server with us, and has been since 2017.
Well, I understand about Chief Monchon in the city of Salisbury, and I understand about Delmar and Fruitland. I'm unclear as to how he's going to gain access to Worcester County, or Somerset County, or Dorchester County through this radio. Is that, but that's what I understood you.
It is true. If they're in, if they're in Wycomico County working with us based on a mutual aid agreement, which we do have, all the Lower Eastern Shore sheriffs have a mutual aid agreement, when they come into the county, they have the immediate ability to communicate with us based on encryption. Thus, they'll be able to hear all their communications as well. And how many of those deputies from different agencies are in the county and their locations? And it's a, it's a serious issue. It compromises our ability to do our job.
Sheriff, I could just piggyback off that, is where you really run into a problem sometimes is in the interoperability, if, if we have to go to Worcester County. Worcester County has to come here, for an example, is not so much transmitting within the county, but it's the, it is the unfortunate circumstance where you have an incident where you have to communicate with agencies that come into the county. It is the most, is really one of the more critical pieces of it.
Shane.
Can we send the executive a letter stating that we would like to see her request this radio back immediately?
We certainly could do that. We can certainly do that. Ms. Hurley, if you want to try to put something together there.
Say it right now.
Again, Sheriff, I'd like to thank you for being here. And again, we will try to do everything we can within our power to support you on this and try to turn this around. I think it's pitfalls like this that honestly make everybody question this, the county, county executive form of government that we have in Wycomico County. I find it kind of ironic that the executive sort of states the case that, oh, you know, you have to have an executive in order to go to Annapolis, and for Annapolis to know, you know, what Wycomico County is doing and to represent, not true at all. And we've all been part of that before, it's not true at all. But don't think, don't think for one second that the state of Maryland isn't more than 100% aware of this unfortunate circus that we have in Wycomico County. They know everything's going on every day. This, this meeting, this, what we're, what we're talking about today, Sheriff.
I get asked about it all the time.
Yeah, exactly.
All the time.
Exactly.
And sadly, and shamefully, I have to tell them what's going on, and it bothers me.
I agree, 100%. It's not a position we want to see this, this county in. I agree 100% wholeheartedly, and that's why we were so glad to have you here today, tonight, and as well as each of you gentlemen, we appreciate again your service. Again, we'll do what we can. My opinion, we just have to get safety back in the hands of law enforcement, period. Nothing else to say about it.
Sheriff President, I have one thing I wanted to comment. Councilman Winn, you had mentioned is the certain technologies that are out there. The Salisbury Police Department, I know that Councilman Merritt was at a presentation I just recently did for the Greater Salisbury, and demonstrated something that our GIS, city GIS, is working on. There is a public-facing mapping that we're getting ready to, or within probably two to four weeks of rolling out, that would be a public-facing product that would be able to, within, you could set it probably as, would push something out within an hour, you can set it for longer than that, that has mapping associated with it, as you had seen, Councilman Merritt, that would accomplish, more than accomplish, go well above and beyond what's really required. But we understand, as you had mentioned, the transparency piece, we want to be transparent, but there is a better way to filter the information that gets out. So some information, as it relates to officer safety, public safety, isn't, isn't part of that minutia that we get out into the public.
Thank you, thank you, Chief Monchon.
Thank you, Chief.
One more thing. I think the statement, if this was a council form of government that we were working under right now, I would say that this would have never happened. You gentlemen all work under council forms of government. For that to have happened in your county, there'd have to have been a majority of your council members vote for it to happen. In this case, in this case, this wasn't an opportunity that we had to, to make that decision whether we would do it or not, so.
And in public.
And in public, yeah. So this is one of the fallacies of having an executive form of government. It's too powerful of a position for things to happen, as, as we've seen. We've got some folks here that experienced that here about a year ago, so anyway.
Josh.
I just want to say, I don't know that, I don't know the last time we've had our Lower Shore sheriffs all in one room together here in front of this group, so I just want to acknowledge that, and thank you all.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, guys.
Jeff, yeah, we got, we have to wrap up.
It's nine o'clock.
Hold on one second. We mentioned the app that the sheriff's office has, daily calls for service, all the way up through yesterday. Every call.
But they did it every 24 hours.
I don't know how much more transparent you can be.
Exactly.
How long have you had that app?
For several years.
Yeah.
Not every sheriff has it. I wanted it for this county, because I wanted our citizens to be informed. I wanted them to, honestly, I explored the app shortly after the kidnapping and murder of Sarah Foxwell. And I realized that we could integrate our sex offender registry in this particular app and give our citizens instantaneous access to every registered sex offender in our community, not just their names, not their just their addresses, but photographs of them, where they're living, so one would know where these predators are located in our county.
And your press releases are on there too, right?
Every press release is on there. They can submit tips. They, it's a very informative app called the Sheriff's App.
Thank you.
Sheriff, thank you very much. We're very lucky to have you in Wycomico County. Thank you all.
Sheriff, I'll see you tomorrow.
Don't, don't be late.
Not long from now.
Don't be late for work. Don't be late for work.
Don't forget your job.
Board of Education, please, oh, I know this is bad.
We got anything else to do?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, that wasn't.
We have that.
John, take five.
Are these by any chance open? It's dry in here.
Would you like one also?
No, I'm good, thank you.
There's one here.
I'm good.
Ready?
I think you're overestimating my ability.
I wouldn't do that.
We're reconvening as the Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2024-18 for August 6, 2024. We are very pleased to have before us for a, an open work session Wycomico County Commission on Women, so that we can get an update. Ms. Meg Allen, the chairman of the commission, women, thank you very much for being here, everybody. Thank you so much for your patience and waiting so long.
Not a problem. Thank you, Mr. Cannon, for having us.
And if you could please, well, I guess you were going to do introductions, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Perfect, thank you.
So I will just flag, we did have our vice chair here with us, Dr. Cynthia Kalixte. Unfortunately, she had to leave, she had to put her son into bed, but she was here, she was looking forward to introducing herself, so I'm hoping in the near future we will have that opportunity too. To my right, we have Ms. Nancy Mitchell, poet laureate of Salisbury.
How are you? Good to see you.
Nice to meet you all. I do other things, but you know.
That's a big one right there, it's a bragger.
It's important.
And then to my left here, we have Ms. Caroline O'Hare from the city of Salisbury.
Good to have you here as well, very much.
So thank you all for having us. I think this is a great time for us to meet. The big theme of tonight has been about transparency. I know Ms. Monica Brooks mentioned this, and that's the very reason why we wanted to schedule this annual meeting with you, is just so that you're aware of what the priorities are for the commission right now, some of the work that we're doing, who we are, some of our new members. So I brought with you all, should be up at all of your desks, a packet that just walks through who we are as a commission, if you weren't familiar with us, our missions, our priorities, and then you can see there at the bottom are commission members. So I'll just, real quick, run through this real quick. So since its reinstatement in 2021, the Wycomico County Commission for Women has made significant strides, including swearing in 15 commissioners. In 2024, we hosted our inaugural Women of Wycomico Awards ceremony and participated in a statewide program hosted by the Maryland Women's Commission. And most notably, our participation in the Pink Pantry Initiative, which we'll be discussing here soon, aims to provide resources for women across the county. Future plans also include a listening tour to identify our 2025 community initiatives, gathering insights from women countywide, and building on community efforts to support women and their families. And then the second page you see, it just breaks down a bit more about our priorities, our missions, and how we intend to accomplish that mission there. So we support women from across Wycomico in a variety of ways, hosting community events, professional development opportunities, engaging with you all as county council members, identifying potential inequities in laws and policies, and then most notably, celebrating and recognizing the accomplishments of women in Wycomico County. So I know you all received an invitation back in the spring. We actually had our first ever inaugural Women of Wycomico Awards ceremony during Women's History Month. I think we were rather excited about that one particularly. So that was an opportunity for us to highlight women who had gone above and beyond, we say like the call of duty, in supporting our community. So one, there were two particulars that we just asked for anyone who was going to nominate individuals. They had to be a Wycomico County resident, and they had to demonstrate these actions that weren't just in line with their day-to-day jobs. These were individuals who had gone and be above and beyond what their day-to-day job called for. So at the end, we had about 56 women nominated for the position. We decided to settle with 15 women who were awarded selected. Some of those are here in the room today. We nominated, Nancy, were you nominated, actually?
Yes, I was, and I received an award.
Nancy was nominated for her work as poet laureate with the city. We also nominated Deb Casey from Warwick Community College for her work engaging with the community. So that one was, I would, I will say candidly, probably our first initial launch as a commission. I'll say since we were reinstated, most of our work as a commission has been to rebuild the foundation of our commission, identify some priorities, rebuild our membership base. So this is our first year where we're really looking to launch some local community initiatives and priorities. So the Women's History Month with the Women of Wycomico Awards was our first kickoff. I'll say it was wonderfully successful, we had a great turnout, and we're looking forward to doing it again next year. One that I wanted to bring to your attention, and this is mainly the reason why we wanted to connect with you all this year, is to highlight one that we are hoping to move forward very quickly on, which is our Pink Pantry Initiative. So for those who aren't familiar with that project, it's something that we've seen statewide have a large amount of success. The Little Pink Pantry Initiative is a grassroots initiative, inspired by the successful model of the little free libraries that we've seen here in our community, but with a focus on providing essential products instead of books for women. So our goal is to ensure that no individual in Wycomico faces the challenges of period poverty, promoting dignity, equity, and well-being for all residents. So it's our intent to make this a community-driven initiative. It's not money that we're asking from the county in any regards. We're partnering with a statewide nonprofit that has a track record of developing these pink pantries throughout the state. This one in particular, they've successfully built about six of these in Baltimore County, successfully run for a number of years, so they have the infrastructure in place on how to build these and how to make sure that they remain supplied and taken care of. So we'll be working very closely with them on that project.
Good.
And I can pause for any questions at all if you.
Yes, Josh.
I just did one, we've had a, I guess, a long-running question internally. I say long-running, probably the last six months or so. I know as you all have been trying to pull this group together and be very thoughtful about it, most of our commissions or committees are housed under a particular department or somewhere within the government. How is this one currently housed, and how is it then funded? I did not see a piece in the budget.
Yeah, that has been a question for us. So we're still trying to navigate that question. Actually, we've had some meetings with the county executive. I will say, we have been advocating for a budget line with the county, not the intent to ask for any funds, but because we actually have identified some micro grants with the state that we'd like to apply for, and we need that budget line to do so. So we did put in a request the last two years with the county executive. This year, we were told that we had received approval for a budget line, and I had a wonderful talk with the county executive. She seems wonderfully supportive of our initiatives. However, we then were told that there was no budget line, and that there just seems to be some very heavy ambiguity about where we exist in the budget and what should move forward with the commission in that regard. So if we could, Josh, if you could help us out, we'd love that.
Well, I was just going to say, I thought that's what the case was. I want to make sure that we do, the year ahead, that we actually do get a budget line item, if possible, for this. I mean, I have all the commissions that we all serve on, you know, there's usually a nominal amount or something within each of those areas. Yeah, and the county executive was making sure that she was trying to provide funding, but there just wasn't space for it, is that what I understand?
When it was initiated, put back in, it was stressed very widely that they would not need any money.
Well, I guess going forward, I'm happy to help make that, get a budget if we can, that'd be great, something we could do to make sure that's.
Please, we really appreciate that.
Outside of your committee as a whole, when you meet, I mean, having the fact that there's 56 women that were participating in this awards, do you, can you take advantage of that, whereas when you meet, do you have like subcommittees or anything else that you can do in order to enhance your, you know, your outreach?
Absolutely. We're looking to expand through subcommittees. I know that a number of our members have a diverse spectrum of interests. number of our members have a diverse spectrum of interests, um, some of them are really thrilled about our Pink Pantry Initiative, some of them are really thrilled about the potential opportunity, which we'll discuss more later, is our listening tour in Wycomico. So we are actually looking to expand, uh, like I mentioned, this is really the first year we've actually had a chance to, I will say, hit the ground running, and so we're, we're learning and restructuring as we figure out what we want to do for the community at large.
I have a quick question, do you have, um, I know you're just starting, Megan, that I was reading this, Texas, one in eight women aged fourteen to forty live in poverty. The Wycomico County Board of Education made a presentation before us, and, because I'm thinking about being a mentor, and my question to them was, if you mentored a child right in school, can you go into their home? And they're changing that, because like if I wanted to take the kid to McDonald's, well, could I, would I be able to, before you couldn't do it, you only saw him in school. And I think one of the projects could be adopting a family where you could, to, to talk to, you know, follow the mother with the, with the children or child, uh, become a mentor to them, but continue the mentorship, um, with that family, and you would teach her leadership skills, maybe finding her other needs that she may have, so that would be like a little project for you guys.
Love that idea, I'd love to sit down further and talk more with you about that, like I've mentioned.
I come up with ideas, but I want somebody to stay.
We're happy to take over any of your ideas, if you want to float more our way, please do.
Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna be a mentor, and I'm gonna ask the, the principal, I said, please don't let him have five or six children in the house, because if I take the kid, you know, want to take the child to McDonald's, I, I'd feel bad, I'd have to take them all.
... by women, and the community, uh, in a partnership with the city, there, we have a poet's corner, and during Women's History Month, we had, uh, an open reading for women in the community, and the diversity was really astonishing, and it was so well-attended, we, uh, so I think that those kinds of things too, to, I think women felt kind of safer being together and talking about and, and reading work about some of the things that, uh, maybe would, they would want to share in a way, and then articulating, articulating it through poetry, transforming it into something else was, was a, a very good kind of, I don't want to say therapeutic, but it was good for everyone. So I think that's build solidarity, to have those kinds of connections, starting here, going farther out into the community, into other organizations, so it's building a solid network, I think that that's what's.
I believe that was on, was that on PAC fourteen or Facebook, or?
Yes, it was.
PAC fourteen, uh, very happily.
You saw it?
Yeah. It was really wonderful, they came in and livestreamed it, uh, each month, uh, but I think finding, you know, having those opportunities for women to share their voices and their concerns is, is part of our mission, and one of the things that I would think that we should do is to, uh, share that this commission exists, and that if you want to be part of it, here is how you go about it. And, um, I was lucky enough to know of, you know, that they were looking for vacancies, but if I didn't have that connection, I wouldn't have known that. So finding ways to, uh, spread the word more and grow, uh, the commission, and not just the commission, but grow supporters of the commission, um, and it reminds me of what you were saying with, you know, mentoring someone, because when you mentor someone, it doesn't end there, they then go on to mentor someone, and then those persons, so, um, in order to do that, we need to have a presence, and we need to let people know that we meet, uh, on the second Tuesday of every month at four o'clock, we actually meet in room three oh one, and these meetings, uh, in this building, the government office building, and these meetings are open to the public, uh, so e, e, even if you just want to know what is, uh, going on with this commission, or, uh, are interested, um, that's a great way to start to become involved. Absolutely, and I will say, um, all are welcome, you don't have to be a woman, you could be married to one maybe, and still come by and learn a little bit more about our commission, so please feel free, all the council members here, you're more than welcome to stop in. And then the last one I wanted to, uh, address you on is the listening tour, I think this is something that, um, could be really helpful for guidance for the county council as well. We're actually partnering with a professor at Salisbury University, who, um, is needing, um, a, who, so, um, students, uh, through their research methods class are gonna need some nonprofits and community organizations to partner with, um, to have, practice on community needs assessments. So we are partnering with the Salisbury University through this, we're really excited, um, because this will give us an opportunity to really gather some definitely beneficial data, um, so we'll be doing a listening tour in the fall, um, we've identified a date, and I'll make sure that we send it over to the council members, so if you're interested, you're more than welcome to attend, it'll be, uh, late November, that we'll be, um, offering this, um, and then we'll be doing a community survey, so we're really hoping that this will allow an opportunity for a really healthy exchange of ideas, um, it'll allow women to address maybe some of the barriers or challenges that they're seeing in the community or, um, concerns, um, most importantly, we want to make sure that they're aware of the county resources that exist for them here, um, and then which resources may not exist that we can build upon for them, so we're hoping that come December or January, we'll be able to turn back around with this data and provide you all with some more information and some guidance.
We do appreciate you being here, you're three very strong women in the community, that's without a doubt. I don't know, maybe you could look at, reach out to the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce, sometimes they take on ex officio members, other words, as the chairperson, you could be the ex officio member and attend their, uh, legislative session, or their, their executive sessions, things like that, you've got a lot of professional women that are associated with that as well, it might be another avenue for you, it may already be there, I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon.
Yeah, so, yes, thank you very much, and again, we'll be willing to work with you within the next year and all that, please keep in touch and let us know, okay?
Fantastic, thank you all.
So much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again for your patience.
And a motion to adjourn to go into closed session. And to reconvene in an open session. All is in favor? Aye. Close? We're reconvening as the Wycomico County Council in Legislative Session two thousand twenty-four dash eighteen for August sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Ms. Hurley?
Okay, so first we have the submission of Mr. James Simmons as Deputy Director of the Department of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism, and Mr. Bunky Lufman, Director of Administration, is before you.
It's, it's the recommendation of the Executive's Office, as well as Steve Miller, our Director, to, uh, make James Simmons the Deputy Director, he has a twelve-year, um, he's had a twelve-year career so far of excellence with Wycomico County, and, um, how I would put it is when local governments do nationwide searches for candidates, James is the type of person they're looking for, so we're incredibly lucky to have him.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lufman, uh, would you gentlemen like to come forward just briefly?
Steve Miller, Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism.
And James Simmons, Recreation Superintendent.
Okay, okay, any comments you'd like to make before we move on?
I would just echo Mr. Lufman's, uh, comments, uh, James has been a star in our department, um, he's done a lot for the county, um, I've seen him grow up from an intern, has had several opportunities in the county, and he's continued to raise the bar, um, within our department, and so just, just real proud of the work that he's done, and, and think he has a lot more to offer to the county.
Thank you very much, James, any comments?
Really looking forward to continuing to serve the department, no matter what, so.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hurley?
So, next is Resolution number ninety-two dash two thousand twenty-four, and this is confirming the appointment of James Simmons as the Deputy Director of the Department of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism.
And a motion from council to approve Resolution ninety-two dash two thousand twenty-four. So moved. Second. Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye. Aye. opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes unanimously, thank you very much.
Thank you, James.
Congratulations.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve, thank you, Bunky. Thank you all very much. And a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All is in favor. They already left.